We've got to get called to order first.
Okay.
So we'll get the meeting going here, called to order at 7:04 PM. And our first item of business before we get to the committee chair is the minutes which I had sent out. Let me bring agenda up here, the minutes of the March 17th, 2021 meeting. Does anyone have any questions about those? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion to approve.
Bonnie, would you like a second? Yeah, I'm going to assume everyone's in.
Right.
Going to assume everyone's in favor then.
A small group tonight.
We are in favor.
Okay. So which reminds me of another point here that we should probably figure out who's taking the taking the minutes. I believe I took the last ones and I could take these as well, but I don't have to. If there's a volunteer.
I can take the minutes for this committee.
Okay. That sounds good. Should be should be fairly straightforward meeting. Then we're up to the selecting the committee chair. So it sounds like Matt.
Okay.
You had a motion to.
Nominate Matt Sowdy.
And I will second.
All in favor?
Yep, I.
I.
Okay, I'll let him know that he's been reelected. And that it was a tight race.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, which takes us up to the committee goals. So I will share over to that document. And these, I think, ended up being as far as the all the committees that I sat down and looked through pretty much the most straightforward document. A because the technology committee had been left to go dormant basically for about five years prior to being reformed this past spring. So other goals from previous years, none to speak of since 2015, and those definitely weren't still relevant. So that leaves looking forward and since committee had just reorganized. You know, this past spring, that initial meeting had focused chiefly on identifying goals. You know, good goals for the committee to work towards to ensure that the committee getting started again had solid purpose, driving it forward rather than you know, just being another committee meeting for people to go to. I mean, committees are a fantastic way to spend your time. Don't get me wrong, but we try to be efficient. So looking back to that, to those minutes from from March. One item that we had taken a look at was creating a standardized form for visiting and evaluating visiting other libraries and evaluating the technology use of those libraries. So you know, regardless of the field, I think library visits are always a good idea. Matt said in the email that he had sent to me that he recommended five to seven. That we do at least five to seven visits, which I think is seems reasonable to me. Particularly for for a goal of, you know, my personal opinion on goals is that you always want to try and say something that you're going to have to work a little bit to reach. You know, if if you don't make it, then it's the reaching in my mind that really is the more critical thing. So the five to seven, I think, feels pretty solid if we wanted to put in a number. Creating a technology plan to help guide evaluation of new technology opportunities. And for the technology committee to assist in evaluation of the Wi-Fi system and help recommend a type and time of replacement to the library board. We've been getting some recommendations as far as you know, you guys should really think about getting things upgraded with your Wi-Fi system from our land management folks. They've been encouraging us to think about that. So I think that's worth taking as a hint that we should take a look at what we've got and what we'd like to have. You know, how many, how many hotspots, where should they be located in the in the building? You know, how strong should they be, et cetera? So in particular, because an upgrade that we had, I want to say three, four years ago aside, we do have a system that we've been been with for quite a while and versus when we got there, our Wi-Fi system were much more reliant on that wireless signal now than we were when we originally got this setup. So you know, we've got all the, we've got all, we've switched to laptops as far as providing to the public. Those all use, et cetera, et cetera. So Bill, I interrupted you.
So I did no, I was just, how long ago was it since we, since the last system was put in place?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
But in excess of five years?
Yes.
Yeah.
With a pretty solid boost that was put in place three or four years ago. But that was on top of the existing system rather than a replacement thereof.
So speaking of Wi-Fi, my Wi-Fi is actually acting up a little bit this evening, but a quick question. Were prior to COVID, were there bandwidth issues for people using the Wi-Fi in the library? And you know, I do know during COVID, there were some libraries and other public spaces where people were going to the parking lots to use the Wi-Fi. I don't know if that was ever needed here in Lake Bluff. Just a couple of Wi-Fi questions.
You know, didn't, I can't recall a particular instant where I heard of that happening. Somebody outside do often see people outside using it during normal business, whether it's sitting outside on the benches. Once in a while, I've seen somebody logging in on our Wi-Fi, sitting out on the tables over by bluffingtons. Which was good to know because I would not have guessed that our signal made it that far. Since it has, it has trouble getting to a lot of places actually inside the building, much less across the street. But I suppose there isn't, you know, once it gets outside, once the signal gets past the brick walls there. There's nothing really to get in its way versus all the concrete barriers that we have in place in here. No, it's a, it's a good question. And because we have some nice solid walls and some interestingly shaped space. You know, always bear some thinking on to as far as where those hotspots go. We made a point last time to try and extend coverage to the meeting rooms so that we could make use of virtual options there. So that should be particularly good. Once we get back to doing hybrid programming programming here at the end of the summer. But in terms of bandwidth problems. To circle back. Not, not really. And in terms of persistent, the biggest problem that we have in terms of bandwidth, I would say is the coverage. You know, that's more frequently been the concern. Because we've all been on our laptops a lot more, we did add an additional hotspot here a few months ago that you know, ordinarily in the in the past, when everybody was in the building, everybody was using staff computers, which were all connected to the network. So we never worried too much about having a really strong signal going to the staff work area. Now, of course, everybody's not just using their their desktops that the the library has here, but they're also still making heavy usage of their their laptops. It's been for a lot of us pretty much our workstation away from work for the last year. So that's been an important extension.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for that background. And Eric and Bill, I have just another, another question in this might relate to the technology plan goal, right? So for cyber attacks are a big thing in the news right now.
Yeah.
Um, and I think when you get a library card, I don't know if the library gets a digital copy of your license or photocopy of your license or whatever, but I just seems timely that we should make sure cybersecurity is somehow embedded in there.
Agreed. The we don't, we don't do copies of the of the documents. We asked to see ID, but we don't make copies of it. And that's a big part of the reason why is if you, if you have it around and if your storage is mostly digital, which ours is, then you have to assume that somebody who's persistent enough is going to get a hold of it. And that's no good.
So do we record like if somebody shows their driver's license, is it just a visual on the driver's license? Or do you look at the driver license number to make sure that it's the same one or as before?
We do a visual verification.
Okay.
So just take a look at it, mark that it was viewed as part of the application process. And leave it at that, you know, honestly, even if we kept copies of them, I'm not sure what we would.
Yeah.
What benefit that would, what that would even really.
I was just thinking more of if we did have them, that that'd just be information that could be hacked. So if we don't have them, that's probably just, that's probably in the.
Yeah. Yeah. In library software tends to be set up that way in in general as well. It tries not to remember stuff. So you know, in in terms of even checkouts, what we can see here at the library, it'll only tell you like the last two people that have that have had a book.
Okay.
Basically enough people to be able to find out if it was, if you noticed it was damaged and you wanted to follow up with somebody. You know, did, were you by chance the one that spilled red wine on this book?
Yeah.
But you know, other than that, most things, the system is very purposefully forgetful. And we try to be equally careful with people's information. We haven't had too many problems. We did have a ransomware attack that occurred. I think three years ago now, one of one of the staff members clicked on something in an email that they shouldn't have. And before they realized what had happened. It had managed to get into about half the accounts on the library and lock them down. So that was that was an interesting run through on disaster management. Fortunately, what it turned out to be because you know, we got in touch with our land management folks and we backed up to the previous day. So we lost basically a morning's worth of work. And that was it, which we were fortunate that that was it. Ransomware is not not fun stuff. Is a major pain.
Yeah, no, they unfortunately very creative how they they do that. Yeah, we had, we had one at our work as well. We ended up going to the backups, but we had to turn on a computer at a time and make sure to find out how they got in. And they they got in with somebody leaving their computer on over the weekend. Wasn't connected to anything, but it just allowed it.
Yeah.
Allowed them to come in and and then put something into the servers and and then corrupted a couple of the divisions, but.
Yeah. And then it's emails and, you know, contacts between different staff members hop in between accounts and.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I do think that that's worth taking an additional look at. I think one thing the library probably is going for it is is that we're not anything I think that people would look at as a, you know, high value target. In in terms of extracting payment from, but there's still a lot of, you know, the just casual stuff out there and generally assuming that you're not going to be a target is not a great plan for
Yeah.
security. So that's a good point. I think that would be something that we would include there in the in the technology plan. In in terms of wanting to look at at security and you know, wanting things to be kept. You know, as as secure as they can be. Any other thoughts on the possible goals, Bonnie? You're new, so you weren't with us on the the meeting back in March.
Right. The only thing that comes to mind is on the first goal in terms of five to seven visits. I would just recommend that we visit a few of those visits are like size libraries. Because while, you know, like Forest is the nearest comparator. You know, the resourcing is very different, right? So just, just something to keep in mind. As we move forward on that first call. Do I know, I don't know if Glencoe has a library or Vernon Hills is a library that serves roughly the same number of residents or something.
Um, Glencoe is the next similarly sized library. It's they've got about twice our budget and probably more than that in space, mostly because it's a really old building. It's a beautiful building. But I would definitely recommend going to see Glencoe. They've got some nice setups there with 3D printers. That's my recollection. Last time I was there, Vernon area in Vernon Hills and Lincolnshire is is very nice, too. But that's a bigger library. In in terms of looking at comparative libraries. That's usually been a challenge for us. You know, I mentioned Glencoe being the the next size up and the bar just kind of climbs after that. Most of the libraries on the North Shore tend to be bigger community libraries. And if they're not a bigger community library, they're a district library. And district libraries don't need to follow community boundaries. So you can have them libraries like Cook Memorial in Libertyville, which is most of Libertyville and most of Vernon Hills. Got 40 to 50,000 people that they've got serving there. And you're absolutely right.
Right.
You can pick up some tips and tricks, but you know, there's elements of scale there that are just not comparable.
What about Kenosha? Is that?
I know she could be worth a visit.
More of a analogous situation. I don't know. I have no idea what the population is there or.
Want to say Kenosha is about. Well, I'm going to look it up rather than guess.
I mean, it'd be bigger than than Lake Bluff, but but yeah, certainly good. We could expand. The other thing is after we go to a few of these, we can kind of regroup and sort of say, okay, what what did we learn from these? And
Yeah. And I can send a list as as well. Highwood would probably be a good visit. The you know, that's been a library that's been really struggled in previous years, but they've got a new director, Carmen Patlin, who's been a real dynamic force. Moving things around, changing direction for that library. So I would be real interested in seeing what they've got going there as well.
Just as a possible another, another consideration, I'll be heading back to New York where I grew up. And I lived in a community that had roughly the same population as Lake Bluff, and it has a small public library. So I could also visit there at the end of, gosh, it's in like two weeks. I'm going in in approximately two weeks. Yeah.
The well, my my understanding of the the goal from the the March meeting in in terms of doing the the visits was that to try and do a couple of them as as a group, but beyond that, to have a standardized process and form in place. So that, yeah, that in a situation, you know, Bonnie's out on the in the New York area and there's a library that would be worth a visit, then you're good to go. You know, that was, was my thinking there. One of the one of the things that mattered, sent me was some ideas as far as the survey form, but they were just a couple of notes. So I don't think we'll probably get too much into actually designing that at the meeting tonight. I think that would probably be something better to work on between the meetings. That strikes me as one of those things that's.
Yeah. Now, the other thing that we talked about was having a couple of the staff members being involved as well. Is that something still we'd want to do? Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be, I think it'd be helpful. So I've, I talked to Eliza in youth services and going to try and pull in Anna. But she's kind of getting started in the new position right now. So it'll probably be a tag team between Martha and Anna. Along with Eliza and that's youth services, adult services, and then Lindy from technical services. I think that should give a pretty with three individuals should give a pretty broad perspective in in terms of the technology usage throughout the library.
Okay.
Then I can, of course, speak to the admin side of things and what works and doesn't there. But and that should be helpful, too, in terms of in terms of being sure that we get a good number of libraries.
The standard, the we were also talking about talking to CBI as well. Would that be sort of part of maybe as we start developing the the list of things that we wanted to ask as far as what things are available? To Bonnie's point, not all the ones might not have it, the bigger ones might be just, you know, sort of like, not light years, but much bigger budget.
Yeah, you know, actually meeting with with CVI, and thank you for circling back around to that one. We could almost add that in as as another goal.
Yeah.
I think. Just put that in as
is kind of a more of a sort of part of benchmarking of.
So oh, you were, you were there, you were at the meeting, though, when we renewed the contract for CVI, I believe.
Yeah, we went, we did the renew renewal, and then we were going to try and sort of bring it back in or conference call them in and just, hey, this is what we're we're thinking. What are, what are other libraries doing with technology?
Yeah. But Bonnie, Bonnie, for you, you were at the, were you at the meeting where we renewed that contract for land maintenance with CVI?
I was, I think it was the one where I think the contract had expired. It got extended for one year. Yeah, I think so.
So one of the, one of the particular points with CVI is that libraries are really their specialty. So they work with a number of libraries in the area. So hoping to sit down with them and besides talking about our technology needs here and any suggestions they might have. You know, anything that they've seen as as far as a trend or that's really worked well for other libraries in the area. Discuss technology needs. Needs and trends. This sentence got away from me. Additional additional thoughts, additional comments.
The only other one that I had sort of down here was was the tech support for for patrons, if we wanted to develop kind of a online YouTube's or whatever, so that they, people can know how to download books or magazines or how that, how they would go in with it for an Android. Just to make things if, make things a lot easier, even though it 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 sort of spells out step by step, sometimes just somebody talking and we've done some very good videos with like the Harry Potter one from before. Somebody talking and showing somebody that and how to to do it, especially as things sort of upgrade. How to download onto an Android device or an iPhone type device. Sort of quick tutorials. So that's kind of what I was looking at. And just sort of finding out where 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 people might be having a, some difficult, not difficulties, but we would, we'd like some help in there.
I I like the idea. Well, when I mentioned it to Martha and Eliza, Eliza in particular usually ends up taking the lead with most of our videos. She she and her husband do quite a lot with with a video up to and including their own. Oh, and my mind is blanking, whatever, whatever they're called, where you're doing it. A series of episodes online.
Okay.
Killing me.
Hot car, you're talking about the whole videos, not podcasts, but.
Yeah. It was basically their own online TV show.
Okay.
And there's a word for that, and I can't remember what it is. Making me feel old. But they had one of those that actually had quite a few followers there for a while. So they're good with that stuff. So usually Eliza jumps in with far more technical terms than I really know what to do with in terms of videography. So I think that would be a possibility. In in terms of looking at what we would like to do on that, that would probably be one to pull Martha and Eliza in on before we put it down as a goal. They had questions for me as far as what we were looking for when I mentioned it as a discussion item. And I didn't have full answers for them. So short, shorter, much shorter answer. Why don't we pull, pull them in first? Bonnie.
Yeah. And just, just to build a little bit on that, I would, I don't know if this is the case, but I would expect that. You know, Overdrive, hoopla, others have YouTube content already created.
Yeah.
It might be helpful if someone at the library did sort of an overview of these are the apps that can be used. These are what their each strength is, and then maybe a link to the content that they already have created. That that might be very helpful rather than developing a lot of original content on how to. It might just be a introduction to, these are the digital, this is how you can access digital assets at your library, through your library.
That's a good point because, yeah, they're probably already done. But I know I've used Overdrive and Libby and and Libby is the one that, I mean, I'm just sort of locked in on to that. It's a lot easier to use. And I think before someone was saying that a lot more stuff is moving towards that platform rather than the Overdrive.
Yeah. Which Overdrive certainly encourages. They want everybody to use Libby. That's their, that's their preferred interface.
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe a goal along the lines of Maybe a goal along the lines of evaluate digital tutorials and
Yep.
Supplement or expand their, their use on the website accordingly. Something along those, those lines.
Yeah, that's kind of what it's.
Not necessarily creating videos, but you know, let's look and see what's available. Um, you know, it's, it's a good point regarding Hoopla and, and Overdrive. Those have to be out there and already exist, so. You know, e- e- even if we don't have the time to pull a lot of those in, we should be able to, you know, create, if we're not creators, we can still make use of what exists.
And, and maybe just from my own edification, Eric, Bonnie as well, what, what is different? So Libby is Overdrive is, is, is a platform and Libby is something that attaches to Overdrive in order to, to do, because you used used to be able to read off of Overdrive or listen or is, have, have, how the two connected or?
Uh, the Um, Overdrive is, is the name of the, the parent company and the, the original app that they had put out to allow people to access uh, their collections had the same name. It was the, the Overdrive app from the Overdrive, um, from Overdrive Incorporated.
Okay.
But then they developed Libby as kind of their next generation platform to, to replace their original Overdrive app to provide better and easier access. And uh, rather than, you know, Overdrive two point O, um, or anything like that, they, they gave it the new name of, of Libby. So.
So you shouldn't.
No, it's
Anymore or um, are you not gonna see an upgrade in Overdrive? You're gonna see the upgrades coming on Libby as, as people?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, they've, all things considered for, for software that they're trying to move away from, I, I feel like they've been pretty forgiving in terms of not cutting people off straight away. But um yeah, they're, they're definitely phasing out the, the one and um, putting in just enough effort on, on Overdrive.
Okay.
Alrighty, um. Okay. So let's see. It's needed, if needed. How's that?
Yeah, no, that's
Because I think that's I, I, I think taking a look at the content on our, on our website now that we've finally got this new website this last year, um, I think makes a lot of sense. You know, and even if we mostly are pulling in existing content, that's still a big enhancement versus nothing at all.
Good.
Yeah, and um, Eric and Bill, I, I don't know if this has been considered or not, but um you know, if there's maybe demand in the community for offering a either in person maybe or a live Zoom instruction on accessing digital resources through your library. I don't know if that's ever been offered before.
We usually try and uh, run um, at least one um, or often more programs. Usually in January, uh, because a lot of people, if they're getting the new devices, it's over the holiday season. Other than that, we try to just always make ourselves available that if anybody needs help getting set up or squared away, that um, we can always sit down with them and, and do a quick tech tutorial uh, one on one with them. Most times of the year, we don't seem to have enough consistent interests to fill um, a program. You know, we'll have one or two people coming in and you know, generally not um, at the same time grouped together enough to make a program out of it. But we always try to be as helpful as we can uh, when just working with people one on one. But definitely a need. You know, I've, it's always interesting, no, no matter what the device is, there always seems to be something that's unique about whatever anybody's picked up, so.
Right, so there's a good, um, so a good starting of the goals, and then as, as the technology plan starts to evolve, it might prompt new things to look at, like the cybersecurity or anything else that's going on.
Yeah. And there are, I, I I'm sure that there will be a lot of technology woven through the long range planning goals too.
Yeah.
So, oh, um, and should mention, uh, Bill, you were at the, the finance meeting.
Yeah.
So you remember uh, that uh, one of the items that was discussed at finance was adding in a question for the during the technology visits, just to see if there was anything innovative that any of the libraries we visited was doing in terms of raising additional revenue. Um, just to see what ideas, maybe we could creatively borrow from uh, other libraries in the area. Since one of the big goals for the finances, um, identifying those additional revenue sources.
Hmm.
One sec, I've got a question. Where's my? Sorry, I've got uh our new staff member Lizzy is working with me this evening, so I told her that if she had any questions, she should interrupt me, so. Since she's on her uh, pretty much first evening here. So, okay, um, are we pretty comfortable with the, the five goals?
Yep, yeah. Will you be able to just um, send that to us after the meeting, Eric?
Yeah, I'll send this out to everybody after the meeting.
And then I'll, I'll make, I'll get the minutes together and send them out to the group.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Any other business to bring to the committee this evening?
No.
So really appreciate the, the attention and thought here. Um, with the brought some, uh, some good, good ideas, good suggestions. I'm really excited that this committee is up and running again.
Just as an aside, Eric, um, the long range committee is, because of the, Bonnie, you're on that as well, aren't you? The long range one or not? No, oh. Do we do?
Building and grounds is the other one, building and grounds.
Um, I suppose Matt was on that then, uh, which are just, we haven't ever get a date yet.
I have not. Uh, that is, that is my last committee that I need to get scheduled here.
Just let me know. I mean, if, if it has to be during the day or anything like that, Eric, I mean, I can work around wherever.
Okay.
Um, the, the schedule, try and get it before next week, but maybe it's not gonna happen.
Well, I think well, I can check on Matt's availability. I, I, I know Matt has kind of a similar schedule often um, to you that evenings tend to be easier um, for, for him, so. But I, I need to send out another, uh, another poll query on that, uh, since the, the last one didn't have um, much if any, we didn't, didn't really have any overlap for anybody, so. Um, it was just kind of a complete no-go.
Okay. All right. Very good. Well, thank you.
Yeah, hey, I, I also did have a question about kind of just meeting logistics. Um, do any of the committees have standing meetings? Uh, would that be helpful um, for this group? To just say we'll meet the, what is it? The first or second Monday of each Monday evening of each month or first and third? I don't know what the pace typically is.
Historically, they, they haven't unless they had a reason to be meeting pretty frequently, and then, yeah, we've, we've done that, so. That's a good thought. That's a good idea. Uh, I think that's worth taking a look at, you know, particularly for technology getting started and going here and, and looking at, you know, doing the evaluations. You know, th- that will probably require um, some regular meetings um, over the next six months or so. As uh, you know, working on the technology plan, doing the evaluations.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, do, do we think um, I, I know next week's meeting is gonna be on Zoom, but after that, do you think the comfort feeling it to um, to, to meet in person?
I think we'll be why, I, I, I think we're gonna try and do the, the board meeting next week. Partly at least in person.
Okay.
We should be set to do that. I'll know for sure by, by Friday, but it looks like we're on track. Uh, it's mostly a matter of getting all the furniture moved back where it's supposed to be. And uh, getting the getting the equipment and infrastructure in place as, as well, because the, you know, putting the tables and back in the spruce room, well, we, we'd never had a virtual component to.
Yeah, because we're gonna do a combo of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, when, when we'd had the virtual in there before, it was, you know, somebody providing a, um, a lecture or you know, showing movies and things like that where the, the common, the communication was a lot more one way, uh, with only intermittent uh, and occasional uh, two-way conver- conversation. And that's not gonna work for like a board or committee discussion, so we've got to get the new um, microphone in place for the uh, conference table and uh, some things like that, but fingers crossed.
Okay.
Should have that in place, should be able to do in person. If not, then we'll do Zoom again. But I think that's where we're moving towards.
Okay. Pretty good.
Any other questions? Any other items for the good of the order? If not, then I would look for a motion to approve, uh, motion to adjourn.
I'll, I'll motion to adjourn.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Robert rules of order, Robert rules of order, a lot of fun with two-person committees.
Yeah. Yeah, what if one of us didn't second, then will we just keep going?
You know, it's never, it's never happened. It's, it's never happened in, in one of these meetings, but technically speaking, then whatever it was wouldn't get approved.
Right, yeah. Very good. Okay, well, have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. You too, Bill. Take care.
Thank you.
I know.
Bye-bye.